Okay, we've got a call to order to the August 2022 meeting of the Homewood Planning Commission. Mr. Goodwin, if you could start with the roll call, please.
All right, thank you. All right. Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Ms. Willcutt. Mr. Harwell.
Here.
Mr. Rospento.
Here.
Mr. Armstead. Mr. Broadhead.
Here.
Ms. Andress.
Here.
Mr. Cronteras.
Yes.
And Mr. Roberts.
Here.
Okay, so the next item is the approval of the July 2022 minutes. I know we've had a while to review those, and Mr. Wilson had some revisions that have been incorporated. Aside from that, do we have any other proposed changes or questions, or can I entertain a motion to approve?
Motion to approve as amended.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we've adopted the minutes. All right, next is communications from Chairman and Vice Chair. Mr. Wilson, do you have any communications?
None.
The only communications I have really have to do with the meeting tonight. A couple things, just, and I'll try to remind applicants and members of the public as you come up, we have a pad up there. If you come up to speak, either as an applicant or a member of the public, try to write your name and address before you start with your comments. Again, I'll try to remind you of that. Also, we've had some issues recently with picking up questions from various boards up on the dais here, so if you have a question, just try to speak into the microphone. Have your microphone on as well. All right, with that said, we have no old business. We'll start tonight with new business, case FD 22-08-01. The applicant is Ryan Medley, and it relates to 28th Avenue South, the 1720, 1722, and 1726 parcels.
My name is Ryan Medley, and I work with Saint Associates. We're at Two Perimeter Park South, Suite 500 East in Birmingham. We're working as the civil engineer for this development, which is to develop two restaurants and a bank that we're seeking final development approval for. You should have a plan before you that shows these buildings. If you have any questions, I can answer them.
Okay, well, thank you, Ms. Medley. Before we do that, well, this is a public meeting, so we're going to invite people from the public if they have any questions. So, having said that, if anyone here would like to speak to the meeting, or speak to this case, rather, this would be your time to come forward to the podium. Seeing none, we'll move on to questions from the commission.
Chairman Roberts, I have a question.
Sure.
I would like to confirm that this will not impact. The city has a grant request out right now to build a trail, a greenway, that would be adjacent to the creek and parallel, it looks like, to the parking. I don't think that this is an issue. I know I'd seen earlier iterations where it, I just want to make sure it's not going to impact any future trail that we're trying to build by the creek.
Yeah. There are no plans to impact Central Avenue and do any improvements that would conflict with a trail there.
Okay, and on the backside, really more is 28th, it's really more the backside of the property, not the one along Central Avenue, but yeah.
Yeah, the backside.
Okay.
Would not be any impact.
Okay, great, thank you.
Wasn't there a discussion about the donut place moving next door to Luca?
Sorry, can you repeat that?
Yeah, wasn't there a discussion about moving the donut place next to Luca? Is that no more the case?
Sorry, moving the...
The donuts.
Yeah, it's Hero Donuts, it's right next to Luca's, it's right next to it.
Hero Rush.
Yes, this would move Hero Donuts to the smaller building from this plan.
We just wanted to make sure it was the right hero. That's all. Wanted to make sure it was the donut hero, that's all.
Well, we would be fine with two Hero locations as well. One change, since the last time I laid my eyes on kind of this general plan, was the market area, it looks like, in Luca's restaurant. Can you tell us a little bit about that?
Yeah, so the building footprints changed a little. Hero and Luca's got a little bigger, but some of that restaurant area is now allocated to a market, and the bank has decreased slightly in footprint.
What do you mean by market?
It would...
Yeah, sir, if you could sign in and give us your name and address, please. Yeah, Mike Shouse with Chambles King Architects, 2421 Second Avenue North, Suite 1. So, the, the market, basically, there's a component of the restaurant that is separate and really is kind of a grab-and-go, so you pick up to-go orders, and it's also a retail market for a lot of the food that's prepared in the restaurant. So, if you're picking up your pizzas, if you're picking up your date night food, your wines, your cheeses, that triangular area is kind of more designated for that and separate from where you're actually going to be eating and dining in the restaurant.
Is there, and I can't tell, it might be on the drawing, is there a separate external entryway into the market area, or do you enter?
There's two, right. So, I think that, you know, time will tell whether the workflow and how people congregate in that plaza, whether they end up coming half through the market and half through the courtyard, but the intent would be to receive people and queue people coming between Hero and the market through the courtyard, if you're going to go to the restaurant, and then the market being more intended for shoppers. I think, ideally, you would mingle and go between the two, but when it comes to staging that many people, I think you're going to see more people come in through the courtyard, especially like in a dimly lit evening time scenario. The invitation is going to come through that courtyard gate, I think, for most people dining in the restaurant. Did that answer your question?
Oh, yes, thank you.
Okay.
That's great.
Any traffic studies done to talk about impact from your ingress and egress on Central?
We have not done a traffic study at this point for this development. With it being a redevelopment, it's not, there shouldn't be significant changes to the traffic generated.
In my understanding, is there'll be more green space now compared to what's been there, which has just been a big slab of concrete?
Absolutely, yeah. That's, I think we're trying our best to kind of recreate a context so that you can enjoy where you're at. So, a lot of the space between the two restaurants is intended to be kind of found organic landscape space. So, you see a lot of those organic shapes kind of in the, it's a little harder to tell, but the left side of Luca and the backside of Hero is a courtyard space that is, has its own context and environment that really kind of takes you out of the hardscape and asphalt around you, as well as, really, everything that is hatched in that floor plan that shows up darker gives you an impression of where all the landscape areas are intended to be. And a lot of those landscape areas are planted with plants, and there's some large trees, basically everything spread throughout the site that the landscape ordinance requires, and then some.
Okay, I think there was an issue last month, or questions asked about a sidewalk. It looks like a sidewalk has been incorporated, at least on the 28th Avenue side.
Yes, we added a five-foot wide sidewalk with a 30-inch landscape strip between the parking at the front of the restaurants and 28th Avenue.
I was just going to ask you about the hours of operation. I know in the BZI meetings they talked about different hours of operation for the bank versus the restaurant and the others, so that, so that in terms of the parking, it's not an overload all at one time. Can you just generally speak to that, hours of operation of each one of those facilities?
Right. Well, yeah, and I may not quote it exactly, so I may have to correct myself, but, you know, Hero closes at 5:00. That's a kind of a standard, so Hero is taking up your kind of 7 to 5. So, the main hours of the restaurant, Luca being primarily a dinner spot, there'll be some overlap there at lunch, and the bank is not going to be open on the weekends, and so they've entered into a cross-parking agreement, and I don't know the exact details of the cross-parking agreement, but the intent is that you're going to benefit from when the businesses are closed and that you shouldn't be driving traffic over top of each other. And Hero's 7 to 5 timeframe, it's still a breakfast and lunch place primarily.
What is the total number of parking on these two establishments?
Can you repeat that?
Yeah, the number of parking spaces on these two eating establishments, how many parking spaces?
So, there are 63 parking spaces provided between the bank and the restaurants, 47 for the restaurants and 16 for the bank.
So, 47 would be for the donut place. For the donut place, it would be 47?
Well, so they've entered into a cross-parking agreement, so we can look at the parking spaces as an aggregate number of, what was that, did you say 60?
A total of 63.
63, and there is a, there's a property line that runs right down, what's the name of this road between the two restaurants and the bank?
I think this was 27th Terrace.
So, that road that runs between the bank and the two restaurants is kind of a perceived property line, but the total parking count and the perception of the parking lot being for all, for the entire development, is, it'll feel like that. So, there's not really, there'll be no designated spaces for any of the establishments.
So, the total number of seating in the two establishments is how many, how many seats?
It's a square foot number. Let me, let me come back to that, because I'll have to do a little bit of quick math, if I can.
So, Hero's, what was your question?
Yeah, well, the seating count is kind of fluctuating, because the interior layout of the furniture isn't exactly fixed, so the aggregate of the parking was basically designed off of the square foot calculations required in the zoning requirements, and that was kind of the trip to the zoning board prior to this meeting, where we've entered into the cross-parking agreement and the size of the establishments. So, it might have to be a follow-up. It's a little bit trickier math for me to do, to get that answer to you, if I can delay that for a minute.
So, in the pre-designed case, you don't have the number of seating chairs, tables, or anything like that yet?
Right, it's, we're getting there. Like, it's around 30 to 40 for Hero, and it's anywhere between 90 to 110 for Luca, but it's, it's kind of always fluctuating, but it can, you can bet that it's around that number.
If there are no further questions, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve FD 220801.
All right. Mr. Harwell.
Yes.
Mr. Rospento.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Andress.
Yes.
Mr. Cronteras.
Yes.
Mr. Broadhead.
Yes.
And Mr. Roberts.
Yes, your case passes.
Wonderful, thank you.
Okay, our next case, a new, piece of new business, is AD 22-08-02, relates to renovations of Cyber Hall at Sanford University. This is a request to amend the final development plan. The applicant is Sanford University. Whoever's representing Sanford could come forward now. And again, as I mentioned before, if you could state your name and your address and put those items of information on the pad in front of you.
Sure. My name is Caleb Martin, and I'm with LBYD Engineers. I'm representing Sanford. Coming, I guess, to you with the final, amended final development plan. The final development plan has, I guess, in addition, in addition to Cyber Hall, which will be placed, I guess, just south of the existing building, in between it and the football field. There's also, I guess, a scoreboard component to this as well, where it will be relocated from the north to the south side near the, I guess, Sullivan Cooney Fieldhouse. I'm happy to help you answer any questions.
Okay, well, this is a public hearing. If anyone here from the public is, wants to speak to this case, this would be your time to come forward. Okay, seeing no one, we'll then close the public portion of the hearing and open it up for questions from the commission.
Could you tell us what is the, Brian, can you show the picture that has sort of the long bridge, yeah, let's see, right there, yeah, and there's another picture that sort of looks at it from above, yeah, there it is. That is gorgeous, what is that?
So, it's a connecting sidewalk. Right now, this is to better facilitate pedestrian flow from the main campus to, I guess, the ballfield, and I guess, just northwest to the, I guess, the Greek Village, just to better facilitate, ease of flow to the main campus.
What's this building going to be used for?
It's, it's a gym. Will have basketball courts, weight rooms, those sorts of things in it, just for student availability.
Now, I believe you said this was also part of the renovation of Cyber Hall itself, as well as this addition, did you not?
That is correct.
What is the timeframe for construction of this?
I believe it's, is it summer of 2024? Is that right? Is the timeframe to completion.
Okay. And then I, I think it was mentioned earlier that there is a height variance request before the Board of Zonement Adjustment for the height of the building addition, as well as that relocated scoreboard sign, so those, those actions are going before the Board of Zonement Adjustment Thursday, but they're, they are reflected in these drawings, yeah.
What, can you explain that picture right there?
This is just a very preliminary concept of the building itself. In this, I guess, is just the rough outline of the addition, as well as the connector, connections to the existing Cyber Hall. Like I said, this was very early on, just kind of...
So, it's the same as the one...
It's the same.
I got you, okay. And then you still have this walkway in front of it, so that just was pre-walkway, okay. Okay. I would make a motion to approve if you're ready for that.
Yes.
Okay, I would make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Who seconded that?
Mr. Rospento.
Rospento, okay. All right. Mr. Harwell.
Yes.
Mr. Rospento.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Andress.
Yes.
Mr. Cronteras.
Yes.
Mr. Broadhead.
Yes.
And Mr. Roberts.
Yes, so your amended development plan has been approved. Okay, our last, well, we have three related pieces of new business tonight, all relating to 1116 Hollywood Manor Circle. I think it makes sense, I guess, to have all three of them presented at the same time. These are case numbers 22-08-03, 22-08-04, and 22-08-05. The first one being a request to resurvey two lots into one, the second case being an amended development plan, the third case being a request to rezone and to address restriction, I think, imposed by the City Council several years ago. So, whoever's going to present on these cases, come forward now, please.
I am Hunter DeFalco with Hunter Home Builders. I'm representing Rose Saris in this. The three things we're asking is currently Lot 9 has a covenant that only allows a duplex or townhouse to be built on it. No single-family home. We are asking the Planning Commission to remove this and allow a single-family home. The Planning Commission can make a favorable recommendation to City Council. Second, approve that amended development plan for the lot. We meet the setback requirements and are using previous pavers to reduce the storm runoff. And thirdly, approve the resurvey of Lot 8 and 9 into one lot.
How are you? Have you finished? Okay, this is a public hearing. If anyone here wants to come forward and speak to this case, this would be your opportunity to do so. And seeing no one, we'll close the public portion and open, open this up for questions from the commission.
I'll ask a question. If the other neighbors in the development are in favor, if you've spoken with everybody, okay. Well, I'm your City Council rep, so I want to make sure you guys are okay with that, so.
They got it zoned for duplex and townhome in there. I know they don't want that.
Okay.
So, I guess the ultimate goal is to combine these lots and build one single-family home.
Correct.
Are there any plans for that home yet?
We have a front elevation, if you'd like to see it.
Yeah, please.
I would point out, for the benefit of the commission, that included in the package for the amended development plan that you have, there's various floor plans, to give you an idea of the footprint of the house and how it would sit on that property. So, you do have that information as well. That's what's being presented to you now.
Is this your only copy, or can I have it? So, I think the way we're going to have to do this, and my fellow members might have more questions, I think the way we're going to have to do this is vote on, there are three different cases in front of us. A couple of them, we have kind of final say on, and one of which, the rezoning, I believe, has to go to City Council, so they make sense for us to kind of vote, even it's a little more tedious to do it that way, to kind of vote on them individually.
Are you ready for a motion? I'm sorry.
If no one else has questions, I'd be, I'd entertain a motion. I think we should just do them in the numerical order.
Go in order, okay. All right, well, that being the case, let's see. Okay, so I'll start with a move, a motion to approve case number 220803.
Second.
So, pretty...
Wilson, second.
All right, okay. All right, Mr. Harwell.
Yes.
Mr. Rospento.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Andress.
Yes.
Mr. Cronteras.
Yes.
Mr. Broadhead.
Yes.
And Mr. Roberts.
Yes, so your resurvey case passes.
I would make a motion to approve case number 220804.
I second him.
I'm sorry, he was seconding by...
Cronteras.
Cronteras, all right, thank you. Okay, Mr. Harwell.
Yes.
Mr. Rospento.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Andress.
Yes.
Mr. Cronteras.
Yes.
Mr. Broadhead.
Yes.
And Mr. Roberts.
Yes, so your request to amend the final development plan has also passed.
And finally, I will make a motion to approve case number 220805.
I'll second that. It was Mr. Rospento again.
Rospento, okay, thank you. Mr. Harwell.
Yes.
Mr. Rospento.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Ms. Andress.
Yes.
Mr. Cronteras.
Yes.
Mr. Broadhead.
Yes.
And Mr. Roberts.
Yes, and so you will have a favorable recommendation to the City Hall with respect to your request to rezone. Thank you all, thank you. Okay, moving along, the next item on the agenda, we've been asked to consider some recommended amendments to the tree protection and landscape ordinance. And I think we've been provided both full copies of what the revised ordinance would be, and also some truncated copies with, with the changes, those being, one, an addition for the definition of artificial turf that would, that would make it, would no longer, would no longer be considered an accessory structure under the zoning regulations. And then there were two exceptions, two new exceptions proposed, one of which would allow, one of which would states that building permits issued for maintenance or interior alterations, where the work area is less than 50% of the building area, or the site improvement's less than $5,000, would be exempt from the, from the requirements of this article. And finally, there was a provision allowing an owner to, in lieu of compliance with landscape, to pay an amount of equal to $750 per each required tree that is not being provided. And I think we had a discussion beforehand that we would like to add to our, if we recommend this, to passing this back to City Council, that we'd recommend that this provision be modified or amended to state that regardless of the payment of this fee to, for trees not, not required, trees required under the ordinance, that no less than 25% of the required number of trees be included or be provided by the owner to meet the, you know, to meet 25% of the minimum tree density requirements under... minimum tree density requirements under Section H. So, I, if we pass that along, I think the consensus was, we can vote on that, to include that recommendation, they can, we can provide language if they want us to recommend some, but I think that the general idea would be to add a minimum, a minimum coverage requirement for trees. With that, with that, with that change, is anyone willing to move to approve sending these on?
So, it's a motion to recommend the ordinance as edited, correct?
Correct.
And so moved.
And as edited, meaning the additional, the 25%?
Correct.
Okay.
And so seconded.
Was it seconded?
Mr. Rispinto.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, and then finally, it seems like this comes up about every two months, but in August, the chair is required to appoint a nominating committee to recommend a slate of officers who will be the chair and vice chair for the meeting in September. The nominating committee, I have requested that Mr. Wilson, Mr. Harwell, and Mr. Rispinto be the nominating committee, and they have all agreed to do so, so they will be presenting their recommendations at the meeting next, next month.
All right, yeah, that's true, and that does not preclude nominations from the floor, but generally, the nominating committee will make a recommendation, and then if there are others that reached it and serve in it, they can be nominated to be considered as well, just to put that up.
Thank you, Fred.
I think that's everything on our agenda. I think we're adjourned.